Looks like everybody's here, everybody's present except for Director Chad. Do we have students?
No student rep for the summer.
Five, no additions and deletions?
I have a number of them, they are in front of you. One would be a letter G to the consent agenda, that is the resignation slash retirement of Gary Malinias. Another would be the consent agenda H, which would be the approved head football coaching appointment of Derek Maulner. One slight switch on 9.1, it should read Joey Addy. 9.5, approve the 1.0 secondary teaching appointment of Robert Heinrichs, who will be the replacement for Mr. Yonich. And then finally, 10.8, approving a change to the June 26 regular meeting to a joint meeting offsite. That's all of them.
Would you like to accept or do you want to add additions?
Which one was the meeting?
8.8.
6.0 visitor input.
Nobody signed up this time.
Okay. 7.0, approve the agenda. You have to get a motion to approve the agenda, correct?
Yep.
Get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the identified agenda additions earlier.
Support.
All favor?
Aye.
All aye? All opposed? Any discussion? 8.0 consent agenda. We just lumped that together, right?
It's one vote, but you should probably read off what's in it.
The consent agenda is A, improvements of the regular meeting of Monday, May 22, 2017. B, approve the Treasury report for the month of May and the first writing check of June. C, approve volleyball coaching assignment for Lori Quapala. The administration recommends the board approve the appointment of Lori Quapala to the position of head volleyball coach with a stipend of $4,920.0. D, accept resignation of Jody Thompson, special ed teacher. The administration recommends the board accept the resignation of Jody Thompson, special ed teacher, and approve the posting of a 1.0 elementary special education teacher. E, accept resignation of Kelly Voss, special education teacher. The administration recommends the board approve the resignation of Kelly Voss, special education teacher, and approve the posting of a 1.0 elementary teacher. F, accept resignation of Jennifer Waldron, Palms advisor. The administration recommends the board accept the resignation of Jennifer Waldron, Palms advisor, and approve the posting of a Palms advisor. All in favor of?
Oop, you got a couple more additions on there, you should read G and H.
I just want...
G is Gary Malinias, one, and H is football coach.
This is G. Okay, G, accept resignation of Gary Malinias custodian. The administration recommends the board accept the notice of retirement for Gary Malinias custodian and approve the posting of replacement custodian driver. And H is approve football head coaching appointment Derek Maulner. The administration recommends the board approve the appointment of Derek Maulner to the position of head coach with a stipend of $4,920.0. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Say aye.
Please need a motion.
I'll need a motion. I mean, I'm sorry. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
A motion to accept the consent agenda.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. 9.0, personnel. Approve appointment of Joey Addy as summer helper. The administration recommends approve the hiring of Joey Addy as summer technology helper at the rate of $10 an hour, and I will abstain. All in favor? No, I get a motion, I get a motion. I get a motion to hire Joey Addy as...
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oop, I can't vote. Okay. Oppose?
Just saying that you abstain.
Abstain. Motion carries. 9.2, secondary appointment of George, secondary teaching appointment of George Harridan. The administration recommends the board approve the 1.0 FTE industrial technology teaching assignment for George Harridan at a salary of $66,373.0.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor of hiring Mr. Harridan?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. 9.3.
No.
9.3, approve a .6 FTE secondary teaching appointment of Jessica?
Corticas.
Corticas. The administration recommends the board approve the .6 FTE secondary math teaching assignment for Jessica Corticas at a salary of $24,768.0. Can I get a motion to approve the appointment of this Jessica Corticas?
All motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. 9.4, approve high school secondary appointment of Laura Tassoni. The administration recommends the board approve the high school secretary appointment of Laura Tassoni at a rate of $21.91 an hour, 85% during the probationary period as per Ask Me agreement.
I'll still move that we appoint Lori Tassoni, as the administration recommends for the position of high school secretary.
I'll second it.
All in favor of hiring Laura Tassoni, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. New business, 10.0. I mean, I mean, oh, nine words?
We added a 9.5.
9.5, approve 1.0 FTE secondary teaching appointment of Robert Heinrichs. The administration recommends the board approve the 1.0 FTE high school elementary physical education health teaching assignment to Robert Heinrichs at a salary of $38,877.0. Can I get a motion to approve Robert Heinrichs' hiring?
I will make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Randy, who is the second? Mike, Andrew.
Set the July board meeting, the board typically has only one regular meeting during the month of July, and sets the date at the first June meeting.
So, we're either probably, if we keep it on Monday, it's either going to be the 17th to the 24th.
I might tell him the 17th. Doesn't matter, but I might tell him the 17th.
How's the 24th look for folks?
24th one's better for me.
I'm open.
All right, then you need a motion to the 24th?
I need a motion to approve the meeting in July, the single meeting in July, on the 24th of July, on Monday, the 24th.
I will motion.
I'll second.
At 6:00?
6:00, yes, yeah.
Should take a vote on this, Bill.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. 10.2, approve property and liability insurance renewal.
Mr. Lindstrum, then he's going to explain to the board the property and liability insurance renewal.
Hello, thanks for having me. We, Jeff and I, John, Drew, and Randy, the, is this working?
Yep.
All right. I know it's normally low, so I wasn't sure. Okay, for this year, it actually, since we visited, changed a little bit to the good by about $3,500. Just kind of a history of where we've come. I don't know, I like to gauge and see where these are, and maybe some reasons of why we are where we are. I first took over here in 2013, thank you, by the way. The renewal quote that year that I was competing against was $197,465. We came in at $171,404, saved about $26,000 that particular year. From that $171 in 2014, we were at $169,174. 2015, we went to $191,585, Experience Mod, which I'll talk a little bit about on work comp, because it's a calculation of claims and premium. Claims are more than premiums, it's a state calculation that they figure for any business that has a work comp policy over $5,000 in premium, which obviously we do. That year, that Experience Mod shot up significantly. Last year, we moved to EMC from Riverport, where we'd been prior. That $191 went down to $152,669, and renewal this year is at $146,803.96. That's everything, that's umbrella, directors, officers, insurance, bless you, the whole autos, the whole family. Experience Mod, just real quickly, I know you folks are busy, it's summer, started out in 2013 at a .96, which means you got a 4% credit, went to a 1.09 in 2014, went to a 1.53. So essentially, you're paying 53% more than the average for your work comp, that was the spike. Since then, we've obviously been working very hard, I know we meet often, Kathy and Jeff and I, to make sure where those are, where those claims are at. It's come down to a 1.26, and this year, a 1.03, so, which is very well received in these numbers. That's really, I guess, all I have at this point. I mean, I can go into some coverage issues if you have questions on those, but nothing, nothing has changed from year to year. Every year, there's what they call an inflation guard, kind of like the other personal homes that go up a couple percent, and that is in there. But overall, I mean, I'm very happy with where it's at, so.
If you have any questions, Gary, let's hear them.
On this, were the, like, the manual arts building or the old junior high covered under anything, because, you know, they're not being used?
Right.
I mean, what side of the life, just a small umbrella?
What they do with, that's, what you have there every year with the sign that's called a statement of values, essentially saying, here's, here's the values we have for the whole district, and that's what that is, and that's on a replacement cost basis, as you see, like you would for home or what have you. The challenge we have with those two structures, every time I've quoted the district now, which we've done three times to make sure we are in the right spot, coverage-wise, price-wise, all those things, those two buildings just red flame. For obvious reasons, you know, if you've been on a tour or walked through there, I try to go through there every couple of years, and they're not like they were when I went to school, that's for sure. So, what they've done is those are on what they call actual cash value, those are not on replacement cost. And they'll, every year, those are the two questions I get, what's going on with those two buildings? Are they coming down? Are they going to be retrofitted? It's an insurance concern, obviously, those two structures. So, they are, they, we cannot get replacement cost coverage, I'm not so sure the district would want replacement cost coverage on those, but it is at what they call actual cash value. So, whatever that, it's the only time in insurance you'll see market value, per se, come into play on those buildings, and not what it would be to rebuild them. So it's tricky when there's a claim, but...
So that piece of parcel is covered under some sort of insurance, so if someone goes onto there and gets hurt, that there's...
Yep. So they are not in that statement of values, but they are, yes.
It's about $7,500.
In premium, yes.
In premium.
On those two structures. Correct, yeah. But they are, I believe there was just $5 million on one, and $3 or $4 million on the other. I can get you those exact numbers, but they are, they are covered, yes.
No, okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, Jamie.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Do you want to call for a vote on renewing that?
Can I get a motion to approve the property and liability insurance renewal?
I'll move.
Second. I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. 10.3, approve resolution, number 64, to refinance EPB bonds.
OPEB. OPEB from Northland Securities.
I think, and honorable members of the board, it may be appropriate, before we adopt the resolution, to understand what we're going to be doing. Going back almost a year, a little over a year, the prior board had talked about refinancing the OPEB bonds, OPEB meaning other post-employment benefit bonds. At that time, we thought we could save maybe $50,000 to $60,000. I've handed out to you something that looks like this, with a bunch of numbers on it. If you turn to page 2, it says 2 down at the bottom, off, the little column, off to the right side on page 2, titled, gotta go one more. There you go. And on the bottom, on the right side, it says savings. Because of the plummeting of interest rates, the savings are now projected to be about $70,000. That's reduced debt service tax levy. That's good, good, good input for the taxpayers. And really, we're cutting interest rates by about one-half. And if you don't believe me, you should ask me that. The next page, on page 3, are the interest rates today, at about 2.5%. And the next page is page 4, and there are the interest rates when we sold the bonds, from 4.9 to 5, all the way out to 5.4. That's the one-half that we're going to save. Now that, those are meaningful numbers, and it comes back to that savings column of $70,000. And we have two ways of going about this process. One is we could publish a great big offering document, and publish it, and for $1.2 million, frankly, it's not worth it, it's an awful lot of cost. We are going to propose a private placement. We've talked to the bank here, and juries told me that by the new bank regulations, they're, they already own a big piece of this, and so they can't take anymore. But we have four or five other banks that are perfectly willing to look at this and then give us a proposal. So we will be back, probably your July meeting, with the final results of that, of that search. And the next set of resolutions, the first resolution, really what it does, it lets us borrow the state's credit enhancement. In other words, the state's AA1, which is really the top, and where they will give us a double A2, that's really high, and that leverages down the interest costs. So what we have to do is, there's a nice little resolution here that says, it's a resolution relating to taxable general obligation OPEB bonds, and we're going to do a refunding of those bonds, and so we're just asking the state, and we'll file this with the state in the next two days, and then they'll have that, and then we're going to take this little circular that's attached, and then we're going to send that to the, about three different banks, and they will then get back to us with rates. No, it's not like it should be really fast, but we've got to get the filing done at the state first, and that, that takes a couple days. And the fourth will be here very soon, and then people will get back to us. And the Federal Reserve is going to meet this week, so it's not, not reasonable to do anything this week while they're fiddling with, with interest rates. So, Mr. Chairman, it would be up to the board, if they want to proceed with the refinancing of the OPEB bonds, to then, for somebody to make a motion to adopt this resolution, so we can file it with the state. And I'd be perfectly willing to answer any questions you have.
Is this the actual resolution to refinance it, or is this the actual resolution to explore, looking to see if somebody is willing to buy it?
This is the resolution to get the state's credit enhancement, so that we can tell the ultimate buyers, we've got the double A2. That's what this is.
So you would, once you did find someone to buy it, you would come back for...
Oh, yes.
So this is just preliminary to get the ball rolling?
It is.
Just to let every, just to make sure everybody is...
Exactly. We've been here before, rates went back up, I wasn't sure that we were going to get back to it, but all of a sudden, rates hit peak, and then all of a sudden, now they're on the way down. And they'll be doing that all summer long.
Any other questions for Mr. Fahy? Go ahead and call for a motion, right?
Call for a motion to approve the resolution, number 64, to refinance the OPEB bonds.
I'll make that motion. Okay.
All in favor?
It's a roll call.
On the roll call, okay, so.
Ready?
How's that going?
No discussion? No, I'll just do roll call, and then we'll go through it. Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Lotiger?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Chad, absent. Director Sather?
Yes.
Director Andrews?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries.
The second, Mr. Chairman, is a simple motion that, once the refunding is completed, we have to structure a very short escrow agreement, and this is authorizing Northland Securities to do that.
Need a motion to authorize Northland Securities to, what do you want that word to?
To act as a municipal advisor.
Act as a municipal advisor.
Can I get a motion to have Mr. Fahy act as municipal advisor?
On the escrow.
I will make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Another roll call, right?
That's just a simple motion.
Yeah, simple motion.
Well, it wasn't a resolution, okay, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
And then I have a little gift for everybody. I've given Jeff Hibbs a gift, and it's something that, that we're doing for our school districts, and we've noted that a number of school districts have asked for information that you already know about, this is information you've already filed with the state, and I don't want to spend your time tonight going through it, but I know you'll find a lot of the information very helpful, very interesting, and if you want different information from us, that that's part of the services that we provided for, for the district over the years. And you just may want to just spend some time, at your leisure, in your back, in your rocking chair, just turn on the lamp one evening, and, and take a look at this, don't fall asleep. But if you do, just throw it under your pillow, and the next morning, you'll remember it Any questions I can provide an answer to? Any knowledge?
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. 10.4, accept the bid for roof repair.
I just handed this out to you. We opened the bids this morning, about 11 o'clock. We received two bids on the project. One was from the Jamar Company for $139,760, and the other was from Range Corners for $187,707. This time, I'd be recommending that we, both of these bids are considerably under what we had estimated, so, but I would recommend that the board approve the Jamar Company to do the roof repairs that we talked about at a study session.
There was, there was nothing changed on those roof repairs, it was as straight-up as, as the ARI proposed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is there any, like, an 8% added to that, to pay our air, or is that the 8% out of that?
There is an additional 8% to pay for architectural services, yes.
Okay, on top of that. What does that bring that up to, do you know?
Do some quick math.
I'll calculate them. An additional $11,180.80.
And what kind of, do we know what kind of guarantee we're going to get with this? I mean, is there going to be any, any guarantee of...
Probably not on a repair.
Okay.
If it was a replacement, yes.
Okay. So they're not going to, I mean, so any of the repairs they do, they will, not a year, or not a couple years, just, so if it started leaking the week after they left? Or say, or say by spring, they would, you know what I'm saying, I mean, is there any sort of warranty information that comes with it, or just going to, I mean, I just want to be careful that word.
With these commercial projects, correct me if I'm wrong, we've done, I mean, there's always architectural engineering inspection prior towards the last payment and all that other process, and we did, I believe we did speak a little bit of that in the work session between total replacement warranties and, kind of as is repair processes, is that ministry's kind of the least expensive route for what we were talking about, so. It kind of is what it is at this stage, unless we want to do the complete full-blown replacement, if I stand corrected, right, Jeff?
Yeah, it will be inspected prior to payment.
Okay, all right. And this is on both campuses, like we said, that's okay, right. Can I get a motion to approve the Jamar Company to make the repairs at our school, roof repairs?
I'll move. Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. 10.5, approve Range Mental Health purchase and service agreement.
This is an annual thing, Range Mental Health provides the gap. This is an annual thing, Range Mental Health provides the DAP services in our, in our schools. Most of that is, it's an add-on special ed service, so the special ed is billed for it. As well as third-party insurance company. The district does incur some cost in it because special ed isn't fully funded. I had Randy do a little search today. And what was, last year, we paid like $12,000? Was our share?
Yes, for last year, we, we, $12,000.
That's 15, 15, 16. We don't, this year's isn't done yet, obviously, so. But just to give you an idea of kinda where we're at.
How much was it?
About $12,000.
For how many?
We typically have budgeted in the neighborhood of $50,000. That's the way it had been for a long time. Actually, the one that you approved, we dropped that down to $25,000 now.
Yeah.
Because as, having Randy do that, looking at the most that we've spent in the last five years is $21,000 on that service. It is budgeted for.
So that, how many hours of, I mean, 12, what are we getting for? I mean, if we go into this agreement, I mean, what do we, I mean, how many hours of our, are we getting of? A mental health director here, or how does that work?
Yeah, we have one, we have one in the Franklin that's full-time.
Okay.
She's there from the time the students are there to the time they leave. And we also have one at the Gilbert campus for?
Halftime.
Halftime.
Two days a week?
Two days a week and every other Friday.
So two days a weekend, so that's, so we just pay the $12,000 and we get two days a week and every other Friday, right?
Plus the full-time at Franklin, that's both of them combined.
Can you explain the difference between a counselor and a DAP? Do you know what the difference is that people left, don't know?
The DAP worker is, it's a mental health component, whereas the counselor is not. As defined by, because these are primarily special ed kids that they, they deal with. They don't, they don't deal with regular kids, the regular education kids. Whereas the, whereas a school counselor does. And we were able to bill for those services through the IEP. We tried doing that with a counselor a couple of years ago. And we're told no by the state, so.
For the, for getting additional funding?
For reimbursing, basically.
Yeah.
Reimbursing side of it.
So are those kids getting seen by the school counselor as well? Are kids being seen by the school counselor and the DAP? So are they kind of getting more services? Because they have more needs?
For the mental health component? Not that I'm aware of. We don't have one in the Franklin for one. We don't have a regular counselor. So that's an absolute no.
Any more discussion? So I can get a motion to approve the Range Mental Health Purchase Service Agreement?
I'll move.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. 10.6, accept food service proposal.
Every three years, we have to go up for, we have to create an RFP and go up for bids for our food service. Which this year was our, was our year to do that. As usual, we had one, one proposal come back through INAC, which we have contracted with for a number of years. You can see by the proposal that the food service management fee is actually reduced by $5,146 over the last contract. If the board so chooses to pass this, this would actually be renewable for an additional two years. At that price. If we wanted to. This is primarily a self-sustaining program, though our food service as a whole, we, this isn't $31,000 that comes out of the general fund. This is $31,000 that's paid through, through collection of lunch fees. And breakfast. It's a, yeah, it's a break-even program. We're not allowed to make money on it, but we're also supposed to kinda break even. So we're within a few thousand dollars every year, one way or the other.
I'll make the motion to accept the food service proposal.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. 10.7, discuss, discussion regarding the music program. Vocal music program. I know that in the past meetings, we had the music program come to us, the choir program, and talk about their need for a full-time K through four teacher to teach vocal. I think it's very important that we look into this and consider hiring somebody for that position. I did a little research and it's, 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 you know, it teaches kids, you know, how to work together, how to work as a team. It teaches them respect. At an early age, I think it's important that we look into this and, you know, and, you know, we found, we found money to prepare a baseball field. I think we can find money for this. For the, for hiring of a, for hiring of a teacher.
My, my one, I'm sorry.
I mean, I just think it's, it's, it's for the kids, and I think it would be a great, a great asset to them.
So I am a huge supporter of the choir and my own personal preference for the arts. But my one thing that I keep having a question of, that I guess I can't, I'm not sure if I'm okay with, is a large part of what's driving it is the individual one-to-one vocal time. And I guess I don't know if that's a lot of time and it's a lot of money being spent one-to-one vocal time that historically, and I don't know if other schools do, I mean, it's choir, choir's choir. I had it, you know, however many days a week that I had it, and that's what I had for years. And I guess I'm not, that's, that's my hang-up.
One of, one of the reasons why I would like to see the vocal music program flourish is because it's another avenue for, you know, for kids, for their creativity. But it's, you know, it's for those kids that aren't necessarily in sports, and this is the way they express themselves. So, you know, and I know in the, in the past few years, it's really, it's really grown. I don't know if there's been a decline recently, but it's really grown. And I think that has a lot to do with, you know, the heart that's been put into it.
That's one of our programs, we've had good response on. We have quite a few students involved in this. And we've cut a lot of other programs that we used to offer, so I hate to see us lose another program again.
Just a reminder, we did cut the program, it still exists.
So I'm in favor of keeping the program going.
Is there, is there anything?
But I, I think it's, we're keeping, we're keeping the program. I think what's being discussed is the request that we've been hearing from the vocal music program and the boosters on trying to figure out how to bring additional staffing to that.
Has that recently been cut, though? Has the, has that recently been cut, like last year? So it was, it was cut, it's not eliminated, it's just been cut?
It's not a program cut, though. It was an FTE reduction. Program is still there. It was, it was rightsized, I mean, where it should be.
But is there, is there a recommended amount of, I keep hearing that there's like 90 minutes per week per student of recommended music instructions per week? Are we, are?
For?
For K through four or K through six or something like that? That's per the, per the state guidelines, or it's recommended? I don't think it's statute, I don't know if it is. But I just don't wanna see us not allowing us as a district not giving adequate music instructions to those students. You know what I'm saying?
We, we looked at it pretty good, and I, I can assure you that we're on par with anybody around here, with what we currently offer.
Let's be better than everybody else.
Are we comparable to the band? That was also one of my questions, and I apologize, I didn't look into it.
We do still offer junior high band lessons.
We do offer individual lessons for?
They're not individual, but we do offer junior, small group lessons.
Okay.
In the summer, yeah.
I mean, my two cents on it is, is, one, this is kind of a budgetary conversation. Two, this is and really, and it's administration-level decision in tandem with our budget. And if we as a board feel that this is something that we wanna pursue, I think we have to take this down to a committee level and investigate it a little thorough, more thorough. But everything that I've heard thus far, I mean, I think everybody has an opportunity. We haven't cut their, you know, nobody does not have, you know, the opportunity to participate in choir.
I guess one of my concerns, sorry, Mike, didn't?
That's right.
One of my concerns is stretching teachers out too thin, is what I'm worried about, because that, that's, you know, we're losing teachers when we're doing that. So if it's, you know, is she, is it, is she being stretched out too thin? Is it overwhelming because she's got so many kids that she's seen? I mean, I don't know if we can discuss that here, but being personnel or whatever.
It's, no, it's a
It's an FTE thing there, right?
It's an FTE thing, I mean, it doesn't, when you attach a name to it, it becomes personnel. We look at, there's contractual minutes for, for teachers. In the elementary, it's one, that magic number is 1,525 per week. Which is what a typical elementary teacher has direct contact with. And, and our, our elementary program is, is under that, actually. So, yes, it's in a lot of different places. That part is tough. But far as minute-wise, I mean, it's, and when you start, the problem is when you start dropping it too low, then the rest of them that are working 15, 25, we're looking at it as, I call them, she's, or that person is getting paid the same amount I am, and I'm working more minutes. I mean, so it's it's another, I mean, it's, it's unfortunately another problem with having multiple locations. I mean, it's, it doesn't seem like a lot between here and Gilbert, but it is, it's an interruption in your day.
Yeah, when you talk the difference between traveling teachers and non-traveling teachers, there's a difference there.
There is a difference, yeah.
Well, I think we should bring this back to the, you know, into a committee and discuss it even more. Discuss this, you know, about figuring out how we, how we can make this happen. Make this K through six and give required amounts of minutes to these students. Like Brandy had stated, I mean, it's, a lot of kids don't have, a lot of kids will see the joy of music and choir and playing an instrument. They may not do a lot of the other things, they may not be in sports. That we need to, you know, allow this to, you know, allow it to, allow the district to give this instruction to these kids. You know, the needed, the recommended.
We're there, I think that's the point. I think, what I'm understanding is they want, they want more and they want enhanced. We, we already have, there's already exposure and opportunity.
But is the teach, the teachers, what, at 1.75 or something like that?
1.0.
1.0? But if she was to, I mean, if she, if that single person was to give all the recommended music instructions to these kids, what would she be, number-wise? You know, the recommended, the 90 minutes per week?
Where's that number?
But I, but I think there's a difference in whether it's being held in a classroom with multiple kids at one time, whether it's being one-to-one instruction. I mean, all that time adds up. It does. And I don't know what her, what that positions ratio is. I know they talked of it, I did not have it written down. I mean, but all of that does add up as far as how you structure 1.0 FTE. Whether it's classroom, one-to-one, small group, whatever it ends up being.
Well, my, my, my other concern is, you know, if, if the, if that position is being stretched thin in lessons or choir class, she's not able to put enough time into the kids, and it's doing them an injustice. And we're losing those kids from choir then. You know, because of lack of the time being able to, to resonate to?
Again, I think that's a function of the administration and the process. The teacher, the principals, the superintendent, and, you know, at some point, it comes to a committee and we have the discussion. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, as today, I mean, I don't, I don't really see the need to keep talking about it, to be honest. I mean, I think we've, it's, we've already kinda researched that, you know, we rightsized it last year because there was some non, non accounted for FTE and restructured things. And I think, I think we're doing all right. We can revisit it maybe, you know, next year through the administration. But, I mean, short of throwing, you know, forty, fifty thousand dollars back into the budget, I mean, that's really what we're talking about here. I mean, it's, it's a money conversation. And, you know, it's been portrayed that kids are missing out on, on it. And it's, from what I've been told, it's, they're not. It's just there could be opportunity for more, but there could be opportunity for more for all of our teachers and all of our subjects and criteria. And that's the point where we hope the administration does their duty and juggles those balls accordingly financially.
I, I get what you're saying, Mike. I, I just, I have a lot of questions, though. And I guess, yeah, I don't know if I would have those. I don't know necessarily that my questions would get answered through my own research or my own bothering of school personnel, which I don't wanna do. And so, I mean, those questions might get better answered for me in a committee meeting. I don't necessarily know if I would be saying, yes, I'm in full support of bringing on another FTE. I really do have conversa, questions about how things are structured. And have there been a decline in students last year? Or when we had higher staffing compared to this year, when we moved to a 1.0 FTE? I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of things that I don't know that would probably be helpful in a committee discussion, but.
And I don't know if I'd necessarily support a 1.75 FTE in, in private vocal lessons. I don't know, I'd wanna know more, I guess, about it. But, you know, is there a way to to compromise in the best interest of the kids? That's what we're all here for, right?
Yep.
But we also have a budget that we have to stay with it. And I wanna be respectful of that. And I, I mean, we're talking money, period, too. I mean, and we do have to make everything match and work. So I don't wanna take it lightly and just kinda dismiss any decisions that were made a year ago, because I do respect them. And I am completely assuming good intentions that everything was studied and looked at thoroughly. I would just be interested on if there's been any dynamics or changes that have happened in this last year because of that.
Can we take this back to a committee, to look at it and discuss it and finding a?
You can, yeah.
I would like to see that, to discuss it more. I mean, I mean, I just feel, I just feel it's important. It's, it's, it's the arts, it's, it's, you got a lot of interest in it, you have, you hate to see, you, I mean, even with the thorough, you know, maybe the decision you made about restructuring, maybe it wasn't the right decision, you know? I mean, financial- I mean, financially, yes, but, you know, maybe, you know, maybe we need to go back and look at this.
But anytime you reduce something, I mean, it's painful in education.
Yes, it is. But...
But from, from our perspective, and it's a recommendation that comes out of the principal's office, I mean, you're looking for places that, I mean, when the board tells you you got to reduce money, you're looking for places that don't affect class size. I mean, class size was their number one, we have to protect that.
Right.
So it was one of the recommendations that came forward and went through.
I would just...
We can revisit it, we can revisit it.
Yes, I would like to, I'd like to do that.
There is a cost to it.
So how would you like to have, make a motion?
No, I, I'm going to ask for a study session at the end of the year anyways, for something else. You can just add it up.
Any other discussion on this? I mean, when, when would you, when would you want to...
Looking at it next Monday.
Okay. All right. So what would you need from ten point seven?
What's that?
What would you need, just, we just move on?
Just a discussion item.
Okay, all right. Eleven point O administrative report.
We've actually got one more and there's an addition on ten point eight.
Oh.
Personal paper that was handed, just added it.
Oh.
The meeting date with Virginia.
Okay.
Go ahead. What's ten point eight? I was just loading.
Oh, ten point eight, I'm sorry, ten point eight. Where, where was that at?
There was no addition, he just added it.
Oh, okay, ten point eight. That was to set the meeting date with Virginia School District.
Yep.
Okay.
For the 26th, is it?
Well, the 26th is a regular scheduled meeting for us, so it would be switched to a joint meeting for Virginia offsite at the Northeast Service Club.
Same time at six o'clock?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Jeff, low discussion, what do, do we know what we're going to be discussing there at all or is that all confidential or what's...
It's not confidential.
Okay.
I, I actually got an agenda back from the facilitator, I'll, I'll send that out to you when I get back to my computer.
Eleven point O administrative report and information.
All right, here we go. This is going to be a long one, so I'll try to, try to get you through. So we ended the year with 969, which is where we were the last time we met. I got a whole, whole bunch of, whole bunch of recognition here. Just like to congratulate the class 2017, it's a great bunch of kids, a big, great bunch of kids, unfortunately. We don't like to lose big classes like that, but, but, no, expect good things from those kids, nice group. Couple of things, we have some retirements this year, we had a little breakfast celebration at the last teacher day. Lori Oats is the first one on the list, 25 years of service. Liz Bianic, fire teacher, fire and health teacher, 24 years she was here in the district. Brad Adraba was the, well, he's various positions, but lastly, he was, he was a plumber eight, retired after 22 years. Chris Beckstrom was a speech pathologist, left Franklin and at the Nell Sheen, she was here for 16 years. Monica Von Wall was the secretary in the high school for the last 11 years. Nancy Wallen was an aide in various places, a professional for the last 12 years. So congratulations to all of those folks. We also celebrated milestone year of service, Rick Heitzman put in his 30th year this year. 25 years, we have three members this year, Jack Gutzmacher, Dan Berry, and Lori Oats. Of course, she bailed on those two. The 20-year mark, we have Deb Custer, Gay Lossing, and Todd Uffer. 15 years of service, only one of them showed up for the picture, but Mark Heitzman, Shirley Leone, Jody Negan was pictured there, and Terry Rosenquist, all been here for 15 years. The 10-year mark, we have Deb Kosky, Joanne Johnson, Brian Roganbuck, and Tim Strasser, who's in the picture there. And then finally, the five years of service, we have Guy Coupalletti, Gwen Lotola, Lisa Perkott, who's in the picture there alongside Mr. Schumau. More recognition, we had 26 kids head down to the state track meet, which is pretty awesome. It's the first time we've had to send a bus in a long time, we usually send the suburban. Just a few, a few notes on that, we had, we had a couple medalists in boys, the four-by-two of Kelly Hackla, Josh Weston, Spencer Garland, and Jake Weston, which should be an owner and I, took fifth place in the four-by-two. Come on Todd, you're supposed to be, you're supposed to be my spell checker. Shotfoot Evan Henickson took eighth place, just a little side note on him, he actually threw three feet further than he's ever thrown in, on his last throw. That's pretty awesome. Girls medalist, the four-by-eight team of Callie Garland, Sidney Carpic, Shelby Carpic, and Natalie Foltz took seventh place and set a school record in the process. Far as participants go, we had in the 100 meters, Kelly Hackla took 11th place, the 300 meter hurdles, Josh Weston took 16th place, the four-by-one of Kelly Hackla, Shane Johnson, Jake Weston, and Spencer Garland took 12th place, and the four-by-four of Josh Weston, Jake Weston, Shane Johnson, and Spencer Garland took 15th place. On the girls' side, in the 300 meter hurdles, Natalie Foltz took 12th place, the four-by-one team of Erin Craven, Maddie Jankala, Mackenzie Pruszek, and Breonna Curry took 17th place, and the high jump, Maddie Jankala took 13th place. Couple notes on the girls' side, they received a Minnesota Academic Allstate Gold Team Award. They have a cumulative 3.87 GPA, which is pretty incredible for having about 30 members on that team. Academic Allstate team, Mackenzie Pruszek, Sidney Carpic, Lennox Crosby, Maddie Jankala, Natalie Foltz, and Anna Melker all made the Allstate, Academic Allstate team. Today, and I don't know how it ended up, but Molly Albrecht and Teak Kowalski, always good, I got a dry mouth. We're down at state playing today, so we'll see how they, they're the, they're the last athletes of the spring, still going. Last honor roll of the, of the season, go ahead, guys.
All right, fourth quarter honorable, seventh grade exemplary honor roll, two students, Will Bittman and John Dolcifer. Moving on to the A honor roll in seventh grade, quite a long list here, Elijah Bull, Carter Flanagan, Sophie Hill, Carson Intihar, Cassidy Jarvelov, McTinder, McKendrick Landworth, Lauren Lottiger, Drew Nelson, Carter Orange, Brandon Pionk, Abby Sunditch, Haley Tar, Brooke Theen, Nick Troutwine, Johanna Westby, Easton Young, Carly Yorcheck, and Emma Sager. Moving on to eighth grade, our exemplary honor roll, Amara Carey, Polly Putzy, and Andrew Terrell. Eighth grade A honor roll, again on the progressive list, Dominic Sealy, Haley Dryer, Alex Garland, Abby Gibson, Cooper Grahec, Ellie Jankala, Kayden Crumpetich, Nicholas Kyander, Maggie Landwehr, Heather Miller, Anna Mills, Liz Mooster, Natalie Petron, Afton Roberts, Haley Schreiber, Rebecca Shepherd, Jacob Sickel, Mackenzie Smith, Ava Thompson, Amelia Wagner, Kayla, Wayne Pog, Wayne and Pog, excuse me, and Jovan Zimmerman.
Ninth grade exemplary honor roll, Avery Delinsick, Peyton Doschen, Natalie Foltz, Carly George, Zach Lindseth, Elizabeth Mull, Ashley Pionk, Emma Westby. A honor roll for ninth grade, Molly Albright, Jacob Bruin, Kyle Jarvey, Michaela Kibbe, Teak Kwitkowski, Lauren Laffaho.
Sure.
Liz Stanway, Cody Stanisic, Will Troutwine, Elliot Van Orstel, and Michaela Winkler. Tenth grade exemplary honor roll, Lauren Day, Audrey Delitch, Kaylee Grahec, Hannah Grenwich, Cody Intihar, Riley Kwitkowski, Megan Larson, Robert Latari, J.C. Zazadi. A honor roll for 10th grade, Hunter Hoard, Rose Putzy, Julia Latari, Quinn Muich. 11th grade exemplary honor roll, Lacy Bodfondams, Sidney Hoag, Kyle Kwitek, Jacob Lindhorse, Kyle Sickel. A honor roll for 11th grade, Margot Geezy, Maddie Jankala, Alyssa Colley, Elena Lindberg, Jacob Lowen, Tyler Norsha, and Stephanie Bitnic. 12th grade exemplary honor roll, Sarah Coldjelly, Samantha Haas, Sophia Leon, Mackenzie Pruszek. And the A honor roll, Molly Jo Garman, Delina Konkala, Caleb Kelson, Christian Moore, Caitlin Rigstead, Morgan Chalotik, Taylor Steelman, and Jada Torma.
Congratulations to all those kids, lots, lots of work.
And the principals are getting the last day in, right?
They're practicing all day.
Time for a new year next year.
Oh, just a couple closing notes here, so it's the first graders, seeing it's their last day here. We had an awesome bunch go down into Franklin this year, I really enjoyed that time of my job. It's, it's nice being able to see the kids once in a while, it makes you remember why we're here. And there's the teachers waving everybody goodbye. So, looking at Monday, looking at classroom technology, I've had a number of board members contact me asking for a study session regarding early outs. It was on the agenda last meeting and failed, but there's been some interest in, at least visiting that in a committee meeting, so we will try to do that on Monday as well as the vocal music discussion. And that's all I have.
At what time on Monday?
Twelve point O, make a motion to adjourn.
Could I ask one question, Jeff?
Yeah.
I read your email on the, informing the new board members on the maintenance schedule. I was just wondering, what, what do we have set up for preventative maintenance schedule between now and the start of new school year?
Preventative maintenance schedule, yeah. As far as cleaning boilers and stuff like that?
Yeah, okay. I was just wondering if we could get Mike Folger, Foreman, to come up with a list of priorities and list the priorities of what we should be done between now and start of next year?
Sure.
Could you instruct him on that? Do you need a motion on that?
Nope.
Okay. That way the board can look at it and you can quantify it.
We can do that. I was actually planning on a, on a note on what we're up to this summer, so won't be a problem.
Okay. That's all I have.
Somebody else? Twelve point O, get a motion to adjourn? Second.
Thank you.